I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, I am Mayor Lucas. I would like to introduce myself. Uh, my mother, Melda, who's sitting up front, my sister, Greta, and my great-grandma. Madam Clerk, the rule.
Belkey.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Marques. MacIver.
Here.
Shower. Five present and two absent.
Do we have a quorum?
Yes.
We have a quorum. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements. Anyone in the audience has any questions, comments, and announcements? Alderman, questions, comments, announcements?
Communications.
No.
Not yet, okay.
The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, December 4th, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak. A- Alderman Kenny. Any corrections? The rule.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
MacIver.
Epstein.
Belkey.
Aye.
Three ayes, one abstention, and two absent.
The minutes have been approved. The next item on the agenda is mayor's report. Re- receiving communications. Do any of the Alderman have any communications to share? Alderman Belkey.
Yes, I wanted to bring up a communication I got from a resident that lives on 67th and Claritin Hills. We are aware that there was an accident, I believe it was about a little over a week ago, where there was a fatality on 67th and Claritin Hills. This is in, this is a resident that has come before the council before and has expressed her concern about wanting a crosswalk or a light at that intersection. And at that time, we did a study, and I believe the study said that it wasn't warranted at that location, but that maybe a little more south of that corner, there might be room for it. And I believe we decided that that wasn't feasible since it was close to some intersection crosswalks we already had.
Yeah, Alderman Belkey, just to clarify, the crosswalk itself may not have been justified at that point. Also, I want to make sure we're not confusing it with a traffic signal at the same time. So, a traffic signal under the federal, federal guidelines was not warranted. So, the study that was completed was partially by Willowbrook. At that time, they had done some improvements on the west leg of 67th Street. I believe they did some on the southbound on Claritin Hills Road as well. So, we do have the opportunity to go and conduct our own, I shouldn't say our own, in joint concert with Willowbrook for a signal, a traffic signal. Just because it doesn't meet the federal criteria, that basically means that we're not eligible for funding. So, a typical signal can run about half a million to $700,000. And then, the other portion that you are referring to was a mid-block crosswalk, and that was for pedestrian crossing. So, there's two separate issues. I want to make sure no one got that confused.
Yeah, the, the main point is there's a safety concern that has been brought up to the council before. We did do a recent, when we did our, our review in preparation for the budget, that was a topic of crosswalks. So, we should circle back with this resident. I know she wants to come in, so she'll probably come in at our next meeting, and we can maybe go over that. But, you're saying that it's, it's not federal, the federal wouldn't approve that.
The federal guidelines did not meet the war, what they referred to as the warrants that was conducted by a CLOA. And so, basically, that means that we're not eligible for it through federal funding. So, we do have the opportunity still upon a study to review all the statistics and a recommendation that will come from the traffic engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Thomas, do you have any comments on the accident?
Yes, the accident's under investigation. The toxicology, toxicology is at the lab, so, and reconstruction's not complete, so I can't tell you too much about the accident.
Any other communications this year?
Just a.
Alderman Clistic.
Just a quick question for Dan. I know we mentioned stoplight, but could there be a stop sign that'd be lower cost, or no, that's not.
Not recommended, that, the study did specifically state, from what I recall, that the stop signs were not warranted due to the amount, amount of traffic. So, a little bit of an opposite of a spectrum.
Well, there is a stop sign going.
Four wa- four ways, I'm sorry, a four-way stop sign.
Right, not a four-way, there's a two-way.
Four ways, yeah, four-way stop sign is not warranted.
Okay, thanks.
And all the comments? The next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. I'm pleased to introduce the Asmara Choir.
Come on the way up.
Big ones in the back.
Tell people in the back.
Hey!
This last song is a Christmas song for Darien. It was written by one of our music teachers in the district. It's called "Christmas Time in Darien."
Christmas comes but once a year, bringing joy and all good cheer. Christmas trees are trimmed so bright, windows gleam with candlelight. Happiness is all around, smiling faces can be found. Christmas carols that we hear, tell us Christmas time is here. Oh, it's Christmas time in Darien, in Darien, Illinois. There'll be lots of fun in Darien for every girl and boy. When Santa comes and brings his gifts into our neighborhood. He'll see that all the boys and girls in Darien have been good. Oh, it's Christmas time in Darien, in Darien, Illinois. There'll be lots of fun in Darien for every girl and boy. Boys and girls are snug in bed, waiting for that man in red. Santa with his bag of toys, bringing lots of Christmas joys. We are wishing everyone greetings heard by old and young. Those familiar words of cheer, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Oh, it's Christmas time in Darien, in Darien, Illinois. There'll be lots of fun in Darien for every girl and boy. When Santa comes and brings his gifts into our neighborhood. He'll see that all the boys and girls in Darien have been good. Oh, it's Christmas time in Darien, in Darien, Illinois. There'll be lots of fun in Darien for every girl and boy.
Thank you choir very much. Ms. Pooja, would you like to say a few words?
She says, really?
Thanks, guys. Nice job. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having us. Well, come up to the microphone.
Oh, okay. Um, thank you so much for having us. This Asmara Choir's been working so hard this season. We love to do our caroling at different places and to share our holiday cheer. This is actually their last performance before we start a new choir in the spring, so it was really fun for us to come and sing for you. So, thank you for having us.
Pooja, thank you. It's a pleasure. I'm so glad you were able to make it tonight. This was, this just was a perfect, perfect night to do this, too. We have our home decorating contest, so it's just sets the to, the tone for the holiday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
The next item on the agenda is city clerk's report. Next item on the agenda is the home decorating committee. Come forward.
Well, it was another superb year for the holiday decorating committee. I mean, the, what we had to pick from was spectacular.
Elizabeth, would you introduce the members of your committee?
Sure. Okay. This is Jerry Legansky, and how many years have you been doing this, Jerry?
Five or six, at least.
And Jim Kaiser has, has also, Jim is our, not only our driver, but he also does the pictures that you'll see later on, once we announce the winners. And I don't know how many years Jim's been doing this.
More than Jerry.
I was gonna say, yeah, at least in the double digits. And I've been at this, this is my fourth year. So, I, I'm always amazed, though, and what a wonderful, actually, public services people do that go out and put in all this time and effort so we can all enjoy what they, what they display. So, I'm gonna start out with, with our honorable mention winners to start off. And the first one I'm going to talk about is Shirley Michaels. Is Shirley, Shirley, yeah, there she is. Okay. So, Shirley lives, lives at 7001 Bentley. She lives with her daughter and son-in-law, but Shirley told me that she is definitely the decorator of the group. And it's her own personal work of art. And if you get a chance to go past 7001 Bentley, you're gonna be treated to a lot of brightly-colored lights. There's fans on the lawn, there's a magnolia tree that's absolutely covered from the trunk out to the branches with lights. It must take her forever to do this. Shirley has been in the area about 26 years. She used to decorate at her home on Nantucket. Her family was giving her a hard time. She uses about 25 to 30 extension cords, in case you ever wondered about the logistics of a display like this. There's, there's, her connections are wrapped as presents in the middle of the lawn. And we have snowflakes on the windows, lights everywhere, a sleigh, a five-foot angel got added this year. The basketball hoop is decorated, and even Shirley's car is decked out with decorations. So, Shirley, congratulations, we, honorable mention this year. Thank you so much for, for your, for your display.
Shirley, come on up here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thanks, Shirley. Thanks for your effort. We appreciate it.
Thanks for brightening up Darien.
Another honor, another home that we awarded with an honorable mention is also, also very beautiful, at 1301 Iroquois Lane. That's the home of Anna Sparaska and Risto Kirov. There we are, right there. This is a very, very unique display. The, the house, they've decorated a big snowflake on the front, on the garage wall. There's multiple lights on the eaves and the chimney in the front of the house, which change colors, and as you stand there, they kind of race across the roofline. Twinkling candy cane, snowflakes glow from the base of the decorated bushes in the, in the front of the house. And all of this adds up to a very well-coordinated light show. So, congratulations. Come on up and give a cheer.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thanks very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you for your effort. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, thanks.
Thank you for the holiday spirit. Thanks so much. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Our next home, also an honorable mention, is at 2 Janet Avenue. That's the home of Mike and Carol Johnson. And I know they're here, I saw them come in. The Johnsons have been at this address for 17 years. Carol says Mike is the decorator and she holds the ladder. This home has a large inflatable snowman, a Santa sleigh, lighted candles, a nativity scene, and a polar bear. Most impressive is the, there's three big evergreens in the front yard, and they are meticulously decorated. They are solid lights from the top to the bottom. It's just, it's just a lovely sight to see, so thank you so very much.
Congratulations, thank you, thank you. Thank you for your efforts, thank you.
You trust her holding the ladder?
Thank you. Thank you. That's right, the brain's behind the operation, right, holding the ladder? Thank you so much.
Okay, our last honorable mention, I've lived in Darien 24 years, and I didn't know that you could live on Easy Street in Darien, but you can. We actually have an Easy Street. So, our last honorable mention is 508 Easy Street, and it's the home of Gary and Linda Weaver. And I, I know they're here with their daughter Paige. The Weavers have lived at this residence for 17 years, and Gary admits that Paige is the architect of the, of the display. They have some nice traditions. Gary said that they always have the home decorated prior to Thanksgiving because after Thanksgiving dinner, that's when they light up the outside of their house. And then, they save Friday to decorate their 12-foot tree inside, and it's just, it's just beautiful. So, I have to comment about that as well. The house really kind of starts right when you drive up. I mean, the, right from the mailbox. The mailbox is beautiful, and it just kind of goes from, from there. There's colored bulbs on the walkway, white lights on the roof, colored holly above the garage door and their front porch. The garage door has this beautiful, sparkly, shiny bow on it. I mean, you just can't miss it when you drive up to the home. There's a breaded star above the garage door. There's a nutcracker on the front porch, probably about, you know, five feet, six feet tall, kind of guarding this, you know, the, the front door. And there's no detail left out. Their dog Scrappy, there's a miniature Scrappy lit dog outside, you know, down below with presents, so even he's represented in their, in their display. There's big ornaments and candy canes on the, on the trees outside. There's a huge decorated wreath on the second floor. And last but not least, their front window has one of those projectors. So, it's, constant scenes come up on a projector, from a snow scene to one where there's a tree with a, a train going around it. And of course, there's Jolly Old St. Nick as well. So, it's just a, a new winner for us this year, and we're, we're glad they came. So, thank you, Weavers.
Thanks for your effort, we appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is that? In honor of you, Mayor Weaver.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations to the architect here. Thanks so much. Thank you.
You're the best decorated winner, too.
Thank you so much. Okay, so. Um, moving into the, into the place, to the five top winners. In fifth place this year, we have, we have 7209 Richmond. It's the home of Amy Cowell. She couldn't be here tonight. Amy's lived here since 2008. If you have children, you have to stop by and see this house. And even if you're an adult and you feel kind of childlike, this is where you want to go. This is Darien's own Disneyland, folks. It's absolutely spectacular. All the characters are there, every form of lighting and decoration is represented. There's candy canes, there's Minion Mickey Mouse, there's inflatables, there's a huge bear that reaches out and like tries to hug you, I guess. Two dogs, snowmen, wreaths, Santas, Sven and Olaf from Frozen, penguins with the mailbox, projections on the garage. And any, any child who goes by this is going to be saying, I have to go back again tomorrow night. So, this, like I said, is Darien's own Disneyland. Every time I go by this house, I see something new, I think, oh, I didn't mention that. But, this is an amazing holiday display, and I hope that we can look forward to seeing this for many years to come. All right.
Okay. In fourth place, 8384 Alden Lane, home of Mark and Debbie Kennedy. They've been residents of Darien for 31 years. They've, they've won in the past. It's, it's just a really, I mean, like I always say, it's a, it's something you'd see in, in Good Housekeeping or magazine. It's just, it's all done in white, white icicles along the eaves and the rooflines. There's, the front lawn is like a country scene with all-white reindeer. Also, on, on the, on the front porch, as you walk up, there's a candy cane with a Merry Christmas greeting on there, which we saw a lot this year, a lot of Merry Christmas on display, which was, I personally, I love to see. There's also Santa Claus and a sleigh on the front porch with a reindeer. There's a huge white wreath on their, on their front window, and behind there is their, is their Christmas tree. And each side of the wreath, there's, on one side is a really white, beautiful, nice big snowman, and the other side is a, a big playful reindeer. And if, if you look really close, on the left-hand side of the home on the driveway, there's white trees there. And then, if you look down real close, you'll see a little Rudolph there as well. So, you have to, you know, look hard, but you'll find Rudolph there as well. So, thank you, Mark and Debbie. I don't believe so. I didn't see them, no.
All right. Number three is at 802 Timber, home of Mike and Mimi Clark, and they also had a prior commitment tonight. Mike and Mimi have lived in Darien for four years. They enhanced their decorations, and they also added to their family with baby Mia this year, so Darien has another resident. But, they have a corner lot, and, and they did a great job. They upped their game this year, and they've decorated on the Richmond side. So, as you come down Richmond, you really get a light show on their side. They've got a star up on top of the chimney, they've got a green tree made out of lights, beautiful nativity set and a train set. There's a canopy of lights over the sidewalk, there's two dogs and a polar bear, pink pigs, green dinosaurs, purple hippos, you name it, it's there. Santa's in a sleigh, and there's eight reindeer to add to the festive display. So, thank you, and congratulations to the Mike and Mimi Clark household.
Okay, moving on up to our second-place winner was actually an honorable mention winner last year, and again, like Liz said, a lot of these homes, once they win, they, they kind of, you know, they get crazier, I guess, yeah, and, and.
Get crazy, huh?
And they, they have an incentive, and, and they really upped their game. So, the second-place winner this year is 7406 Richmond, which is the home of Ron and Kathy Needham, and I know they are here today. Like I said, they were an honorable mention last year, and, and they've just, you know, taken it up to another level. Ron and Kathy have been residents for 17 years, and, and they, and they both started decorating after Thanksgiving. There's a snowman on the coach slate, and on the right of their house this year, there's a, a full Santa and his six reindeer, Ron, or eight? Six, in full flight. I mean, they're just, they are way up. And if you look close, there's a fence there, and there's homes outlined in, in lights, so it really looks like they're, you know, flying above, above homes of, of Darien, maybe. Darien, Illinois, after that song today. There's white rope lights lined all the eaves, which is new this year. Color lights lined the windows, they have a new shooting star to the left of, of their driveway. There's lighted polar bears, arches, penguins, an ice cube snowman, and gifts on the front lawn, and also a nice Merry Christmas greeting right in the center of their lawn. Lighted candy canes and candy lined their driveway. They also have their garage doors is a big packed, I mean, a package, you know, with a, a football, a red ball on it as well. And there's a lighted snowflake above their front door, and if, and if you look closely on the first floor, there's a projector of Santa Claus as well. So, thanks, Ron and Kathy, for stepping up your game and moving up the list. Thank you.
But we have to. Tell them what it is. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thanks for, we appreciate it.
Thanks so much. Congratulations. Thanks for, appreciating so much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kath. Thanks, Ron. Okay, and this year's winner, again, last year was a fourth-place winner, and, and again, they have stepped up their game. So, this year's winner is 1905 Center Circle, the home of, home of Dan and Ann McGinley. Okay, well. You, Dan will get the check. Yeah, I mean, Dan's the architect for this great display and starts decorating before Halloween. They've been residents of Darien for twenty-four years. There's colored lights on the eaves and, and gold icicles as well. There's colored light bulbs outline all their walkways and there's wreaths on the garage. And there's a series of inflatables on their front lawn, which start with a Merry Christmas greeting first, Santa in his sleigh behind there. And then there's also a snowman. On the left of the driveway, there's a big kaleidoscope snowman there as well. If you look up in the upper windows, the upper white window has Santa Claus and the other window has The Grinch on display. So there's full, you know, action going on. New this year, again, they've also, they have those red and green laser lights on the, on their home. But new is also, they have a personalized greeting that goes across the front of their house and it says Merry Christmas from the McGinleys. So again, a lot of, a lot of Merry Christmases here, which is, I really like to see. Also new this year is on their garage door, they have one of those projectors that projects images of Santa and presents on their garage door. And then also on the right, there's a long fence and it's a series of red and green lights that kind of look like the Northern Lights. It's just, it's very, it's very peaceful. That's the first thing I think of is, is the Northern Lights. And as you drive up to this home, roll down your window and listen because ninety-three point nine delight is playing. When we drove up, drove up that night, I, I wasn't sure if it was on Jim's car, if he was actually, you know, had it on in his car, but we realized it was actually outside. So that's just another part of the display. So not only can you see it visually, but roll down the window and, and hear some carols from ninety-three point nine delight. So thank you, Dan and Ann, for this display and thanks to their son for showing.
This is a check of two hundred dollars. And congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Okay, and last but not least, there was something new we started this year was getting nominations for the best block or a series of homes. So we did have a couple of blocks that were nominated and, but I have to say, this block just, you can't beat it. I'm a little jealous because I live in Tom's Ward on the other side, so I, I think I have to get my block inspired. But the block is the seven-eight-hundred block of Sawyer. And representing that block is Sherry Gillespie and Steve Warnicki. I believe Sherry kind of set it up, but Steve was very instrumental with getting the homes decorated. As you know, in that part of Darien, I mean, the, the, the blocks are very long. Even the block I live on is very long. And I think there's really only a couple of homes that don't have something outside. And when you get to the center of the, of Sawyer, that's where it's really happening. There's just a lot of really nice displays. So that's something that definitely was a, a benefit this year to have a block nominated. And seventy-eight, seven-eight-hundred Sawyer's is, is the winner of that. So thank you. Sherry and Steve.
Do we have someone here?
Yeah. Sherry and Steve are both here.
Oh, good.
And Sherry and Steve are going up and down the block, making sure pretty much everyone participated.
Multiple times during the, the season, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job. Nice job.
Thanks, Steve.
Pleasure meeting you.
Forty-four out of forty-eight. So, so forty-four out of forty-eight, Steve said. I think I still have a bigger block party, but I guess I'm gonna have to. But, no.
It's on.
Yeah, it's on. And I know the bus is gonna go out this Wednesday.
I was gonna announce the, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just as an update, Wednesday, December twentieth, we have two buses going out at six-thirty, one bus going out at eight o'clock. And we have thirty-two seats still available for the six-thirty buses and we have eighteen available for the eight o'clock ride. So just call City Hall and, you know, just register over the phone.
And yeah, so all, all the winners, you know, just make sure your homes are, are on that night so that when the, the buses come by to, you can show them off. Thank you.
Jerry, that's Jerry Legansky, Elizabeth Hayes and Jim Kaiser. Thank you very much.
And as usual, we have our picture board here. You guys can put that up in the lobby for our in-and-outers to take a look at. And I was communicating with Diane Novarini about working on getting the pictures into Darien Connect. So I'll send those tomorrow to one of the ladies I know.
Mary.
Mary, there we go. I knew it was one of them in there. And so, so that way the, the whole town, whoever gets Darien Connect can see them. And I think the city up that's game this year, too, with the wreaths on the light poles up and down Seventy-Fifth Street and Cass, that's a, a nice touch.
How about the trees? The, the, the children of, of Darien decorated those five trees in front of the, the clock tower.
Right. So we're, we're all up in our game. And with the great weather we've had, it's been a nice time driving around and a lot more lights are up this year, too.
And we have our own song now. And we, well, it's better, it's better around. Oh, has it been? Okay.
And I know Home Depot is happy, too, 'cause they've sold a lot of extension cords.
Good comments.
Do you want to do a picture with everybody?
Yeah, that'd be great. Would everybody come up? Absolutely. And Mayor, I think Mayor Lucas should be right in the middle. So all the winners, come on up. Okay. Go down. Go down. Oh, this way, this way. Lucas, this way. He's young, he can jump over.
All guys in the back.
Don't give him any ideas, Mike. Maybe I should get a picture, too. Yeah. Picture, too. Yeah. Everybody come up? Absolutely. And Mayor, I think Mayor Lucas should be right in the middle. So all the winners, come on up. Okay. Go down. Go down. Oh, this way, this way. Lucas, this way. He's young, he can jump over.
All guys in the back.
Don't give him any ideas, Mike. Maybe I should get a picture, too. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Maybe you need to be in front.
Yeah. Front, Lucas.
Take it from me, it works better. All the, all the.
Jim, is there somebody?
All the shorties come up front.
Oh, sure.
Okay, Mayor Lucas, you there? Okay, we'll do that. Okay. Sounds good. Which camera are we looking at?
Oh, yes.
My lucky.
No, you're fine.
Robert, you got it?
You got it.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Brian, for, for the viewing audience, will we be publishing the addresses of the winners and everything so that the, like, I can put it on Direct Connect or something?
With the pictures?
So the public will know?
I think we typically do. We certainly can do that, yeah.
This way people will be able to go see it for themselves.
What, what I was gonna do was imprint the picture with the address. So then that, it doesn't confuse anybody with what name goes to what picture.
Okay.
That would be great.
Thanks, Jim.
Oh, you're welcome.
No yawning, Lucas.
How about we do this, we'll put this up.
Yeah. Pretty cool. Okay, we'll wait. Okay, we'll wait. Okay. We did a great job. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, yeah.
The next item on the agenda, city clerk report.
I have a few, I have a few items. City offices will be closed on the following dates. Friday, December twenty-second, Monday, December twenty-fifth and Monday, January first. Our next city council meeting, which was scheduled for January second, has been canceled. Our next city council meeting will take place on Monday, January the fifteenth.
Next item on the agenda, city administrators report. Administrator Vanna.
I have no report, Mayor. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, department head information, questions. Chief Thomas.
Hi, the monthly report's been submitted. I can answer any questions that anybody may have out of there or any other issues that you might have for me.
Any questions? Municipal service, Dan Gonbeck.
Thank you, Pro-Tom Mayor. No que, no report this evening. More than happy to answer any questions from the city council.
Any questions for the council?
Yes, just a quick reminder to residents, anytime more than one inch, is it? Or two? Snow, they need to remove their car from the streets. Two inches of snow. They need to remove their car, so.
Hey, I got a question for you. I don't know why, I thought there's no direct correlation. I was going through Darien Club over the weekend and there's, residents got like ten bags of leaves out there waiting to get picked up this weekend. I'm guessing they're not gonna get picked up? Yeah, no?
The snow plows will hit them and disperse them back onto the front lawn. No. We're done with that, so we'll have to make sure we get the resident letter.
Okay.
Make sure they take care of it.
All right.
Next item on the agenda, treasurer's report.
Thank you, Lucas. Mayor Lucas, this evening I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number seventeen-eighteen-sixteen in the amount of five hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and thirteen cents from listed funds payroll for the period ended December seventh, the amount of two hundred seventy-seven thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents for a total to be approved of eight hundred twenty-six thousand six hundred three dollars and sixty-three cents.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alder, Alderman McGyver? Alderman Clistic? Any questions for the treasurer? Lou?
McGyver? Aye. Clistic?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Okay, we have two absent, five ayes and two absent.
The warrant has been approved. The next item on the agenda is the monthly report.
Thank you, Mayor Lucas. The monthly report for the seven months ended November thirtieth reflects general fund year-to-date revenue of ten million four hundred twenty-one thousand three hundred seventeen dollars, expenditures of six million nine hundred eighty-six thousand two hundred two dollars for a current balance of three million four hundred sixty thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars. Water fund year-to-date revenue, five million three hundred eighty thousand forty-six dollars, expenditures of three million nine hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty dollars for a current balance of one million eight hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue, three hundred twenty-nine thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars, expenditures of two hundred seven thousand fifty-seven dollars for a current balance of five hundred eight thousand thirty-two dollars. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue, a deficit of eight hundred fifty-five dollars, expenditures of ninety-seven thousand nine hundred five dollars for a current balance of eighty-four thousand three hundred ninety dollars. And the capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue, two hundred thirteen thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars, expenditures three million one hundred seventy-nine thousand three hundred forty-three dollars, current balance of six million five hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Any question for the treasurer? Next item on the agenda is standing committee reports. Alderman McGyver?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Lucas. The next meeting of the Darien Police Committee is scheduled for Monday, January fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six P.M. in the police department training room. Pending agenda items.
Okay. The administrative finance committee meeting that was scheduled for January the second has been canceled. Also, the municipal services meeting that was scheduled for December twenty-sixth has been canceled. Their next scheduled meeting will take place on Monday, January twenty-second of two thousand and eighteen.
Next item on the agenda, questions and comments? Andy Alderman, do you have any questions or comments? Alderman Belkey?
Thank you. I just had to do the last reminder because the timing is at the end of the year almost and the deadline for the citizen of the year nominations is January second. So please stop by City Hall or go to the news and announcements on the website of our homepage and you can find the nomination information there.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, old businesses. No businesses. Consent agenda? No items. New businesses? No items. Next, the next item on the agenda is questions, comments and announcements. Alderman Clistic?
Quick question. It looks like you did have to, have to fix that storm drain there near Hibba Sushi. How's that coming along?
See, it's coming.
Turned out, I guess, 'cause I know we had initial estimates here. And I'm driving by, I see that we had to tear that up and.
Actually, Alderman Kenny had the opportunity to be out there. I know we tried to get, whoever has the opportunity to come out there. I know a lot of you could work during the day, but the hole is just, really, it, it's a sight to see, to see the, you know, six-foot pipes that you could basically walk into, two of them side by side. And the costs have gone up a little bit and that was due to bad ground. We had to get a crane out there in order to lift the actual slabs for the footings, if you want to say. Poured the concrete on Saturday. Ted was out there on Saturday. I did meet out there with him as well. So it's going as planned. Luckily, the weather's been cooperating. I know we were worried about the rains that were coming in Sunday. So that worked out. Obviously, it was, if you want to call it a rain. But it's, it's on schedule. We plan on having the top on there next week. We also did confirm that the easement, it is an easement that was dedicated to the city of Darien. So that is, you know, it is the city's. So the next step will be putting the flat tops on, filling everything back in. By the time you see it, that's all you're gonna see up on top is two thirty-six-inch diameter manholes. Right now, the size of the hole, if we were to picture, is probably a little bigger than the size of this conference room. So just to kind of give you a, a little bit of a heads up. And basically, the depth of it is from the ground floor all the way up to the ceiling upstairs. So, you know, sixteen, eighteen feet. So it's definitely a sight to see. We don't run across this too much, but I think, you know, luckily, we had the opportunity to find it and fix it right away. Otherwise, this would have been another walnut. And, you know, if it would have been an intense rain event, again, there could have been more catastrophic events or results to the north of the dig.
How, how long have those pipes been in the, in the ground?
Best we could tell, probably going on fifty, fifty years. Five zero. Five zero. Yes.
Five zero years.
Yes.
And, and to last this long without an issue, that's pretty remarkable.
Correct, correct. So we're gonna have, um, robots. Mr. Robot's gonna go back in there and he's gonna televise the rest of the pipe to see what opportunities we have for what we refer to in the field as slip lining. So that'll be coming forth for budget, you know, unless we see something that's gonna be more catastrophic or of an emergency event, obviously, we'll bring it back to the city council immediately.
How far can the robots go down? Couple of feet?
Um, depending on if there's any craters in there, because the bottom is rotted out. The robot should be able to go at least two hundred to four hundred feet.
Okay.
So again, and it's, you know, we don't want to send people down there. You've got gases down there, containment issues, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Almost a plain field heading north and.
Correct.
Maybe Cass heading south.
Yes, yes.
Which directions are they going?
It's going back to, from our dig right now, the pipe is going back towards the west and the, and north. So towards McDonald's, actually cuts right through McDonald's, right by the drive, on the drive-through aisle. And by the time you see it, that's all you're gonna see up on top is two 36-inch diameter manholes. Right now, the size of the hole, if we were to picture, is probably a little bigger than the size of this conference room. So just to kinda give you a little bit of a heads up. And basically, the depth of it is from the ground floor all the way up to the ceiling upstairs. So, you know, 16, 18 feet. So it's definitely a sight to see. We don't run across this too much, but I think, you know, luckily, we had the opportunity to find it and fix it right away. Otherwise, this would have been another walnut and, you know, if it would have been an intense rain event, again, there could have been more catastrophic events or results to the north of the dig.
How, how long have those pipes been in the, in the ground?
Best we could tell, probably going on 50, 50 years. Five zero.
Five zero. Yes. And to last this long without an issue, that's pretty remarkable.
Correct, correct. So we're gonna have a robot, Mr. Robot's gonna go back in there and he's gonna televise the rest of the pipe to see what opportunities we have for what we refer to in the field as slip lining. So that'll be coming forth for budget, you know, unless we see something that's gonna be more catastrophic or of an emergency event, obviously, we'll bring it back to the city council immediately.
How far can the robots go down? Couple feet?
Depending on if there's any craters in there, because the bottom is rotted out, the robot should be able to go at least 200 to 400 feet.
Okay.
So again, and it's, you know, we don't wanna send people down there. You've got gases down there, containment issues, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Almost to Plainfield heading north and.
Correct.
Maybe Cass heading south.
Yes, yes.
Which directions are they going?
It's going back to, from our dig right now, the pipe is going back towards the west and, and north. So towards McDonald's, actually cuts right through McDonald's, right by the drive, on the drive-through aisle, and back across Plainfield Road onto Seminole.
So it does not go, it does not go south under, underneath 75th?
Oh, yeah, no, it also, that part's fine. That part's fine, 'cause there's concrete. It's what they refer to as concrete RCP, reinforced concrete pipe. The condition of that is, is fine.
I would like to ask a motion to adjourn. Alderman McGyver? Alderman Belkey? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor Weavers.
Great job, Mayor. Great job.
Thank you.